I'd like to call the regular city council to order. Joanna, would you call the board, please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Proton Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snatzinger.
Here.
Councilmember Malacut.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escabal.
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Jim, do we have any responses to citizens' inquiries?
No, Mayor, no updates tonight.
Okay. Are there any additions or deletions from council for this agenda? So we have a couple proclamations and a couple service awards. So would council like to come down with me? Okay. No? All right. So the first proclamation we have is for National Law Enforcement Week. Is that Jim's coming up? The chief? The chief is coming up? Just checking in. I don't think you were doing that. All right. And again, this is a proclamation for National Law Enforcement Memorial Week as well as the National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the President of the United States Congress and the General Assembly of the State of Colorado have designated May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 14 through the 20th as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week. And whereas during Law Enforcement Memorial Week and in particular on Peace Officers Memorial Day, we honor those officers who made the ultimate sacrifice while performing their sworn duty. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas in 2016, 143 law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty in the United States. These officers were killed in the line of duty in Colorado. Corporal Nathan Allen Carrigan of the Park County Sheriff's Office, Trooper Cody James Donahue of the Colorado State Patrol, and Deputy Sheriff Derek Mace Gier of the Mason County Sheriff's Office. And whereas the City of Northland tragically lost one of their own officers, Corporal Edgar E.B. Rains Jr., who was killed in the line of duty 33 years ago on May 30 of 1984. In honor of Corporal Rains and other fallen officers, a candlelight vigil will be held, excuse me, in E.B. Rains Jr. Memorial Park on Thursday, May 18, 2017. And whereas it is fitting and appropriate for all citizens to join together in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, helping to preserve the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore I rejoice Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 14 through 20, 2017, as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week in the City of Northland, and call upon all citizens to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies, excuse me, observances. I therefore proclaim May 15, 2017, as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Northland in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community, dated in Northland, Colorado, this 8th day of May, 2017. Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much. Please join us on May 18 at 7:00 over at U. B. Park. We've been doing this, gosh, I'm gonna say at least 14 years, 15 years now. And it's metrowide. We have jurisdictions from all over the Denver metro area that'll come out with their honor guard. And it's a pretty sombering ceremony, but just to see the support for law enforcement. So thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, the next proclamation, we have Kids to Park Day. And I see we have Mason and Deb Lawson. Do you want to bring Buddy up here?
Buddy can't talk.
I know, Buddy can't talk. He can dance. How you doing, Buddy? All right. I'm so glad you're here tonight. Yes, all right. Thanks for bringing Buddy. Thank you, Mayor. Let me read this proclamation for you. Okay, again, it's proclamation for Kids to Parks Day. Whereas May 20, 2017 is the seventh Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and high cholesterol. And whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore I rejoice Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 20, 2017 as Kids to Parks Day and urge residents to make time on May 20 to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park, dated this 8th day of May, 2017. Deb, do you want to say something for... It's kind of a hard act to call.
I know. Yeah. There we go. I would first like to publicly thank you and council for always supporting these wonderful, wonderful programs. And this is your last year that Buddy will be able to be with you. But we want to publicly thank you for having such wonderful support for us.
Thank you.
And this year, we're gonna be going back on Saturday, May 20, to E.B. Rains Memorial Park, 10 to 12. We'll be working with the Heal Committee. And we'll have a lot of fun, games. Everything is free. And of course Buddy will be there. He doesn't wear himself out between now and then. So thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Thank you, Buddy.
So much.
Mayor would like a picture with Buddy.
Oh, my goodness. Come on, Deb. I've got a higher height by cast here. Thank you. Thank you all much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, Buddy. We don't want Buddy to fall. No. No. Buddy would have a cast also. Okay. Next, we have two dedicated service award to be presented. One is for Susan Waldman and one is for Trinity Waldman. Susan cannot make it tonight, but Trinity is here to accept both of them. So Trinity, where are you? First, this is your mom, right? Okay, first of all, I'll give you this one. And it's for your mom, Susan Waldman. And it's a dedicated service award for Parks and Recreational Advisory Board, dated November 23, 2015 to April 13, 2017. And it is presented by the Mayor and City Council of Northland this 8th day of May, 2017. So I'll give you that one. And the next one is for yourself. Okay, and again, it's for the Northland Youth Commission. And this is dated a dedicated service award to Trinity Waldman, March 28, 2016 to March 20, 2017, presented by myself and the City Council of Northland this 8th day of May, 2017. So congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Debbie Tuttle for Economic Development. Debbie?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Couple updates for you. I know we gave an update regarding the Huron Center when we had our joint meeting with NARA, but for the purposes of the audience listening and watching the video as well as our friends here, the Huron Center will start construction, a $7.36 million construction project. It should start in June. We plan on closing in June on the Anchor Building, which will be sold to Evergreen. And construction will start immediately after. So knock on wood that everything goes smoothly on the closing and that. I know everybody is really wanting to know who the Autumn Parts and the Grocer is. I can tell you, I just talked to Tyler Carlson this afternoon and he has told me, no, I cannot release it at this point. But he has sent emails out. The Autumn Parts wants to... Once they get all their permits approved by the city, they said we can do a press release. We've got everything in with the exception of the North Metro Fire and Rescue District. So I think we should be able to do that relatively soon. It takes a little bit longer for the fire department. The Grocer, they're just finalizing a couple items. And again, Tyler has reached out to them so that we can announce this as soon as possible because I know everybody is eager. One of the things I wanted to note was on the Huron Center as well as many of our projects, the EPA grant, remember, we got the $300,000 grant? We did use EPA grant for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 at the Huron Center as well as like the Wells Fargo Building, the Belco Building. We've done nine assessments with that grant. And our goal is around redevelopment and making sure that the environmental remediation, Phase 1s and 2s are done and helps bring down the cost for some of the owners when we're doing that. New tenants will open at the Huron Center again by the end of the year first, probably if not end of December, depends on weather, as we all know in construction, or the beginning of next year. And to remind everybody, the Arby's has a 20-year land lease. Evergreen will be preparing the site, getting all the utilities and so forth. And then they will start construction probably Q2 of next year. And they plan on opening in Q3 of next year. So the rest of the folks should be open by the end of the year or the beginning of the year. Wanted to bring to your attention the Denver Metro median sales prices that I mentioned there in our ED report. It's amazing what's happening in the housing market right now. And I know it's really surprising, all the prices. And if you've been out there, it's pretty amazing. But Northland's average cost for a home is $310,000. That's the average cost. That's gone up 12.7% over last year. To give you a little bit of idea, we've got all the other cities and how we compare to those. But the average metro area, the cost is $406,000. Again, ours was $310,000. And they've only seen a 7.9% increase where we've seen a 12.7%. So Northland definitely is a place to buy real estate here, as we know, because it's only on the market two and three days as we've been told by the Denver Metro. Also wanted to note, we have 12 new storefronts this month. It was a busy month. And seven new home-based businesses. Business retention expansion for March and April, we've done 10 visits to our businesses. And out of that, it was great because we had ACD come to one of our primary employers, which was Atlas Roofing. And they're actually going to do a tour, an industry tour that Adams County Economic Development does at Atlas Roofing. This will be their first one for the year. So we're pleased. Yeah, they were very impressed with their facility. Special thank you to the 18 businesses listed in my report who are celebrating doing business in Northland for their anniversary. We, again, our goal is to really appreciate them and this does mean a lot to them, those cards. Business events, and I know I talked about this at the last meeting that we had jointly, but just again for the audience. The Metro North Chamber held the inaugural State of the Region. The mayor gave comments as well as with the other nine mayors and town manager. And we also had a booth there. So it was very successful. Northland Sign Code, that we had a lunch and learn with our businesses on the Northland Sign Code. Not listed in that report, it was a manufacturing roundtable that we just did on Friday, which was very well attended by a lot of our, specifically around our resource providers. I think we all in that room learned a lot of information, so. Also, Northland unemployment rates, I can't even believe this. I mean, I went back over two decades and it's at 2.9%, the lowest it's ever been over two decades of the information that I have. So that's amazing. NARA updates, as you are aware, we did have a special board meeting to approve two resolutions with Evergreen and Impala. That was their license agreements and redevelopment agreements. That was on April 3. On April 12, we had a regular meeting. We approved the courts purchase and sale agreement. And that will be for volleyball and basketball courts as well as a retail center in the front. We also approved two business improvement grants for Fashion Exchange and Fit Club 4. Both of them are all new businesses. And then, of course, we had our joint council and NARA information meeting on April 24. Any questions?
Questions? None. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just make a comment that, at the coffee with the mayor this morning, the first question was, when are you... What is the reason why you're not telling us? Is it all going south? And I went, no.
No.
No, it's not. But there's so, you know, I said, please. I says, they want to make their own announcements. I says, so, you know.
Well...
Everybody's so anxious.
I know, and so am I. Because my phone is ringing off the hook, I'm sure, just like yours is. So the project is going fine. I mean, we've had, all of the plans are put in to engineering, public works, planning. The building department, everybody's reviewing everything. We don't see any problems at all. We're working very, very well with Evergreen and their team, their construction team. And again, everything is moving very smoothly. They are on a very fast track to get this done. And so, of course, they're encouraging our city folks to, you know, really be on top of this. And I will tell you, they have been. They've been absolutely wonderful. I want to give kudos to all the folks here from planning and public works and the building department because they are jumping through hoops to get these things approved quickly.
Thank you. All right. Good news. All right, next, we have public invited to be heard. And we have several speakers, but I have a question. Do you... Do the students want to come as a group together? Or should I call you individually? That's your... Up to you. How do you want to do that?
Group.
Group, okay. So Tyler, why don't... Since you're the first one to sign in, whoever is in Tyler's group, you want to come forward and introduce yourself and tell us what you have to say? Okay.
Okay. So, hi, my name is Tyler. I'm Olivia. And so, yeah. So we're just gonna read a letter that we sent to the city to get a part of Wyco Park for our temporary playground.
Dear Mayor Downing and City Council Members, if you give us permission to build a playground on your property located at 1170 Irma Drive, STEM Magnet Lab, we can give our students a safe, fun, and enjoyable outside playground. The new playground will only be temporary for a certain amount of time. A section of Wyco Park will allow us to build a temporary playground to help us get rid of extra energy that we don't need in the classrooms. All we need and want is to build a play area for our students of STEM Magnet Lab so they are not so hyped up and that they won't pay attention in class. Our students work hard and as President Theodore Roosevelt once said, "Work hard, play hard." So we believe that we should follow this rule.
The area that we wish for is the area between the tennis courts and the sidewalks. Saving this area for a new playground will help due to the fact that the old playground will be removed from its current location and will be replaced with the new playground that we designed. Extending STEM school building will give us more room and take up space where the old playground is now. We need a place to put the playground and the only location is by the tennis courts. The playground is not just for students but for the city as well. From 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is when the playground is open to everybody. So as we stated before, we would love for you to make the decision of allowing us to create a new playground on your property located at 1170 Irma Drive, STEM Magnet Lab. Sign. Olivia Riley. Cyan Oslyn. Olivia Riley.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions, council?
I have a question, Mayor, for me. Thank you. How long do you guys... Do you think the playground is gonna be there?
It's probably gonna be there until the construction of the... Or the expansion of the school is complete. So probably about roughly two years.
Roughly two years.
I have an addition to that. We got the approval to make the new playground, the permanent playground on Wyco Park, too. I'm pretty sure.
So about two years is your estimation?
Two years for the temporary playground.
All right. Anyone else? And then the goal is to move it back where it is now?
Um, no, there will be a building.
Okay, so it's to move it all the way... There permanently, right? Not just for two years? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood. All right, anyone else?
No, I think it's just...
It's just temporary.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
It's just temporary.
It's a temporary situation.
Because the new building will take place of where the playground, the temporary playground is.
And then they're gonna have another playground somewhere else. So, okay. Anyone else have a question? Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, next, we have Ethan. You want to come on up with your friends from groups? Okay. Can you introduce yourself so we know who's who?
I'm Ryland Crosby.
I'm Ethan Pecall.
And then Will Seor.
This is a letter we sent to the city council. Our school, STEM Magnet Lab, is expanding within its property lines. We will not have enough land for our playgrounds and free play areas to stand. We realize that there is not enough space for us to build another playground. So we were wondering if you would let us use your land for a short period of time due to the lack of space for our children to roam and play. We will be only borrowing the land until our construction is finished. And then we will find another place to put our children's playground, unless there is still not enough space in between our boundaries. So within the two years, we would have a temporary playground, but in the same state we would still want that.
Right. If that's not enough to move you into action, consider what physical activity can do for long-term brain health. It reduces your risk of stroke, which is the fifth leading cause of death in America. And the number one preventable cause of disability states the American Heart Association in their "Get Moving and Boost Your Brain Power" article. If you will let us borrow your land, then our children will be able to improve brain power, reduce the risk of stroke, and the number one cause of disability.
Having a playground is very important to all kids. Also the kids will... Also the kids will be in smaller classrooms after enduring construction. They are really going to need to move around. It would be great if... It would be great if you could let us use Wyco Park to build... Wyco Park to build our playgrounds. Sincerely, Will, Ryland, Ethan.
And Scotty, I'm ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Kyle?
Thanks, Mayor. I would want to get your opinion on what you think the neighborhood's gonna think about relocating that park. Do you think that they're all right with it? Or was there any outreach done? Or do you think that the kids... Because you said that earlier on in the previous one, that you said that the neighborhood's gonna be able to use it. Do you think that that's gonna be a good thing for that, for the neighborhood over there?
Yeah.
I don't think it'll take away... I think it'll stay the same for the neighborhood because it's still there.
Okay.
We still have a park there, so.
And also with our current playgrounds, I always see kids in non-managed schools playing in that playground. So it would probably be really cool if they could just still have a playground.
All right. Any other question? Yes, comments? All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for writing the essays. Do we have John Overbee?
I just wanted to say, I teach this wonderful kids. And so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of STEM Lab and the parents, too, who are here. Thanks also to the parents who brought the kids. But it's a... They did a PBL. And basically a PBL is a problem-based learning. And actually, Mayor Downing was there during our panel, which is basically she comes and gives feedback. We also had, I think, three more city employees. They came also Jenny Murphy and Jeannie Boggs and Dana...
Dana.
Yeah, I don't remember her last name, but yes. So it was great to have the city represented. So I just wanted to thank the City of Northland for that. And also, the process that these kids see what's... It's going on right now. And for you to allow them to be part of the process by inviting them to come here tonight to just read their letters and answer any questions was great. So they can kind of see when they actually do see a problem out there, like, of course, a playground and not... I should say, the lack thereof of a playground. say, the lack thereof of a playground, that really affects them. So for you guys to invite us in and allow us to speak to you and read the letters was great. And then also, too, I know, I know, I don't know the exact location of, you know, where it's going to be, but, you know, when the park, you know, when the temporary park does come into play, the kids are going to love it, because if you've ever been in a classroom, you know, teaching, or if you've ever been in church, you know, teaching Sunday School, whatever that is, if you don't have adequate place for them to play, it's really hard for them to learn. And it drives teachers crazy, too, so we really do appreciate it. So, thank you from STEM Lab. Appreciate you guys.
You're welcome. And we have a couple of questions. Go ahead.
I just want to ask a question. When you, should everything work the way that you guys want, and everybody wants it for you, is the playground going to be scaled down a bit when you move it over by the, if we put it over by the golf course, or the golf course, tennis court?
I believe so, but I'm not exactly sure on what they have, I know, there's people here from our district that probably answer that better than I can, but I know that it'll probably be a little smaller than it is now, just because we have a pretty good space for the basketball courts, and there's, you know, the K-1 playground and the, and the elementary playground, and then the free space area that we have also. So, I'm not exactly sure if that's going to decrease much, but it'll still be a place for them to play, which is really what we need.
I think that I would be really curious to see how much, you know, space y'all are thinking about, you know, and what you're moving over there.
Right.
Okay? Only because I live right there.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that, you know, we're still going to have a really pretty park there, too.
Right. I understand.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Mayor, if I just could talk to the students real quick and let them know and thank them for coming out, but also, you know, there are constituents as well, even if they're, you know, in, in school right now, and so I want them to know, I want you guys to know that anytime there's an issue or you want to come talk to us, that microphone's open because you're our residents as well, and so we're up here representing all of you as well, and so you're welcome here anytime, okay? Thank you for coming out.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much for coming and reading the students. Thank you so much. All right. Next on the agenda is the financial report. I think that's Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here to present the first quarter of 2017 financial reports. It's still pretty early in the year, so it's hard to get too much trend analysis kind of going, but we'll still talk about a few different things. I'll start with an update on sales and use tax. Year-to-date, sales tax collections only are 2.1 million, and then sales and use tax in total is just over 3 million, and that represents a $217,000 decrease, or about 6.7% over the same time last year. Sales tax specifically is down 10%. Food tax is up about 2%, and then auto sales is up about 6 point, about 6%. A few of the areas locally, so we talked about the GEO code areas, so the geographic areas in town, about two-thirds of those are below prior-year levels as far as sales and use tax. We have seen some increases as far as out-of-city and then out-of-state returns that are getting filed. Amazon.com now files, and so that actually helps a little bit. There's a little bit more information in the other packet, other than this presentation, that kind of goes through the GEO code, so when we get done, we'll get into that if you guys have any questions. I'll start off with the general funds. Again, we're a quarter of the way through the year. Collection and spending rates on that far-right column are in line with what we'd expect year-over-year. Total revenues in the general fund are at 4.1 million. That's down 4% over the prior year. Again, that's largely due to the tax, taxes, and also fines and forfeitures that are down about 35% over the year. On the expenditure side, total expenditures are at 4.9 million, and then other financing uses are at 130,000. Again, nothing in these first three months of the year that stand out. We'll obviously keep an eye on sales and use tax, fines and forfeitures on the revenue side, and then as far as any of the expenditure categories, those are all in line with what we had planned in the budget session. I'll point out, on the beginning fund balance number in that far-left column under the 2017 budget, we project, projected 21.2 million, and the actual numbers, those are audited numbers in the 2017 column, actually came out to be 22.2 million. So, through our budgeting process, we had, every fund doesn't turn out like that. I just wanted to point out what that fund, beginning fund balance number means. And then also, we ended the year with fund balance at 90% for 2016. The conservation trust funds, again, this is lottery proceeds, revenues are at $92,235, and expenditures are at $9,235, for net change in fund balance of $83,000. Again, that large budget number in the conservation trust is part of the Northwest Open Space project that is kind of ongoing. You'll see in the capital projects funds, total revenues are at 919,000 with expenditures of 518,000. The majority of those expenditures are part of the Justice Center project. And as you know, that fund, a lot of the expenditures are for residential streets and traffic signal and concrete program, and those are things that are getting bid out. You guys have probably approved those contracts recently or are about to, so some of that spending will pick up as the year goes on. And then the water and wastewater funds, taxes, so food taxes and the half percent sales tax have generated 518,000, and user charges and fees are at 1.5 million through the year, so a total of revenues in the water and wastewater fund of just over 2 million. And then expenditures are at 4 million. The largest line there is the capital outlay of 1.9 million. Almost all of that capital outlay expenditure is part of the Headwords Project. That's, I think, going to wrap up sooner rather than later in 2017, so I think that project is about complete. Next, the stormwater funds. Revenues are at 79,361 with expenditures of $69,061, so net change of 10,300 through the first three months of the year. Again, there's a large budget of 1.3 million for a Grange Shaw Creek project. That's where you see the expenditure line item showing 1.6 million for the budget. And then next is the sanitation funds. Total revenues 382,000 and expenditures 246,000. Those are in line with budget and the revenues are forecast to be close to near budget through the first three months of the year, since those are pretty static charges month over month. So the next time you'll see me will be in a few minutes, as we'll talk about Council Bill 1886, and that's going to adjust the 2017 budget for carryover of capital projects, plus we're going to make a few other adjustments, so keep that in mind. We're actually going to be changing those budgets here over the next month, basically just to reconcile what we had projected at the end of, for ending 2016, and then what actually happened, and then we'll clean those budgets up for those projects that are allowed to carry over. Again, general fund revenue is down 4% year-over-year compared to last year, and then, like I said, 65% of the locations in North Glen through the first two months of sales and use tax are behind, so we'll keep monitoring that closely and keep updates coming regularly. So with that, was there any questions on the presentation piece or on the more detailed presentation?
Questions? Yes, Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Question I have is, we've seen our sales tax now, you know, for the last couple of months consistently go down, and I know that we, in the past, have gotten a report of our top, you know, 20, 25 businesses that have generated sales tax. Is there a way that Council can get that report so that we can see the effects that potential business closings have had, and maybe if that's a reason? I just haven't seen that report in a while now, and I'd be curious to see if maybe if we can put some reason behind it.
Yeah, and I'll bring that the next month. So, yeah, clearly, some business closures have had an impact. On page 10 of the other report, you know, there's some closures in the marketplace, that's down about 26% year-over-year. So that, that definitely has an impact, and we're, we're taking a close look at those things to see.
I know, I would just like to see kind of what we are losing out with those business closures, what kind of the city's missing out on from prior years that we've gotten in the past. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can provide some information there.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Carol?
So, while I appreciate that you make that statement that we shouldn't be too worried because it's so early in the year, but for me, three months is a quarter of the year, as for you. And to me, to see those numbers coming down all the time is a little disconcerting, so not that you can do anything about that, but I am saying sales and use tax is down, and the funds aren't bringing in as much as they usually do, so.
Yeah, so the, so the sales and use tax are for January and February that are being reported. March, there's actually a, an uptick, which is a positive. I'll report on that next month, but just to throw that out there, that sales and use tax in March was actually up a little over 4%, and so the decrease of about 6.7, I think it's closer to about 2.5% now. So, it is hard with some timing, some, you know, obviously, some closures have an impact, but new businesses opening, playing impacts, have an impact, so it is a challenge.
I just look forward to seeing them come up.
Yeah, I think next month, you'll see that next month.
All right. Is there any other questions? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is ordinance's first reading. Joanna?
The first one is CB 1885, a bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 21 of the North Glen Municipal Code, the North Glen Sign Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Again, this is a proposal to approve CB 1885, amending the sign code. Just a quick update, we did present some of those updates to you on April 17th in a study session. It was also presented to the Planning Commission April 18th, and then we had the lunch and learn with the business community on April 26th. There is really no substantial questions or major feedback received during either of those other meetings, and so we recommend approval, and Brooke is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. I'll close that vote, and CB 1885 on first reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CB 1886.
A bill for a special ordinance amending the 2017 budget, recognizing revenues and appropriating expenditures by supplemental appropriation for the payment of the costs and expenses of the municipal government, agencies, and offices of the City of North Glen, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Again, CB 1886 is to amend the 2017 operating and capital improvement budget. Jason's going to walk through, think the table, and just hit some of the highlights, but really associated with the youth commission training, a sign truck purchase, a trash truck purchase, and the, and the major capital project of the Justice Center. We do have detailed spreadsheets that are attached to the memo, and we do recommend approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Kyle?
Yeah, Jason, I have a question for you. Thank you, Mayor. Can you explain a little bit, because in your previous presentation, you spoke to the fact that, basically, it sounded like the, the city got around a million dollars more last year than was actually budgeted. Is that correct? Is that, is that what I heard?
So when we do the budget, we estimate, you know, total, what we'll spend for the rest of the year, and then we're coming back now to kind of clean that, those estimates up. So, we actually spent more in 2016 than we had planned, so the CIP carryovers of those large projects, we're actually going to reduce the budget for those by just over, so $4,565,300 across the funds, so we're actually going to reduce those capital projects budgets, since we spent more the prior year.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
So it's a non-carryover.
It is a non, it, correct. It's, on the CIP piece, it's actually a reduction. You're correct.
Anyone else? Please open the vote. Thank you.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CB 1886 on first reading passes unanimously, and I would like to note for the record that the public hearings on CB 1885 and CB 1886 will be held on May 22nd, 2017, here in City Hall Council Chambers.
Thank you. The next is resolutions on the agenda, and the first one is CR 50.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glen and Keane Concrete Incorporated for the 2017 CDBG concrete replacement project.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just a quick background, in 2016, we did receive our CDBG funding for concrete replacement. Unfortunately, we wanted to wait till, you know, the weather was better to do that work, so that's what's in front of you tonight. We did a invitation for bid back in November, and in January, received bids from five contractors, which ranged from around 179,000 to 259,000, and the lowest bidder was Keane Concrete, so we are recommending approval of the resolution that would authorize the mayor to execute the contract between the city and Keane Concrete for the 2017 CDBG concrete replacement program in the amount of 179,800, and then the contingency amount would allow the total contract to be increased to 205,347. Again, there's a timeliness with CDBG funds, so we wanted to make sure we had that contingency in there, and the project would take approximately two months, and we completed this year. And Brooke is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Kyle?
Sorry, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I have a question for Brooke. Brooke, just for our residents, and especially in Ward 3, looking at the map and what's eligible and what areas are eligible for this program, can you explain how that's determined and how certain areas are eligible and certain areas aren't, and if there's been any talks about making this, bringing in city funds, or doing whatever we have to do to potentially make this a city-wide program?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and council. Great question. With CDBG for our, in order for us to use monies in this manner, we have to identify areas that are called low to moderate income, and in order to meet that threshold, 51% of the population or more has to, in a given census tract, has to be low to moderate income classified. And so what you see in the map are the areas that we have sidewalk repair work that are also in census tracts that are 51% or higher. Interestingly enough, where you sort of see in the north central part of it, there's a kind of a cluster, there's actually a census tract right in the middle there that's not included, that's at 49%. And so there are opportunities for us to look at other areas outside of these census tracts. However, in order to do that, we have to show what they call a rational nexus, that there is a benefit to those areas adjacent to the census tracts that do have the LMI classification, that shows that it serves those areas. So I will, I will also offer up that in this year, in future years, we are probably going to be looking at utilizing the money and plan in different ways, because we will have effectively utilized or repaired most, if not all, of the areas that are census tract eligible within the city.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Kim?
Can you just explain why we have such a large contingency on this one, a 14%? 10 is typically more normal.
Sure. So, the, we are appropriated the $200,000, and so basically, what we're going to be looking at doing is that when this project wraps up, we need to spend down in full amount or we have to return it, so that's one of the reasons why that's in there, is just simply because that's the allocated funds that we get from CDBG, and we just need to identify how we're going to spend them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Brooke. All right. Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 50 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 51.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glen and Lane Inliner LLC for the 2017 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The next several resolutions are public works-related projects, so I'll, I'll hear each one of these individually, of course. This is for the 2017 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program. Again, we've got appropriated $500,000, and in February, we did a RFP invitation to bid for the program, and the lowest responsible bidder was Lane Inliner LLC, which had a base bid of 447,800, and after removing the remove-and-replace location, the base bid was reduced to 372,600, and then we added an alternate, which was in the original IFB, for pipe bursting, which is 77,860, which then had a total of 450,460. And again, given that we have allocated $500,000, we're recommending approval, that the contract would be for 450,460, and with the contingency amount up to $500,000. And Kent is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 51 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 52.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glen and Asphalt Specialties Company Incorporated for the 2017- Company Incorporated for the 2017 residential street program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a resolution to approve the residential street program, but it also includes a specific roadway project as well, which is 99th Avenue. And during the December 2016 study session, we did present the residential street program for your consideration. In addition, we included the 99th Avenue section from Huron Street to Bruce Lane for full reconstruction. This is really based on the Geotech recommendations we got after the water main was replaced in that area recently. So in February, we did the IFB, and the lowest responsible bidder was Asphalt Specialties Company with a base bid of around $706,000. And so the total appropriation would be $450 for residential streets, $350 for 99th Avenue, contract amount of $706,798, with a 10% contingency of $70,679, which actually leaves us a balance in the fund of $22,500. So we recommend approval of this resolution, and Kent is here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Kim?
So last week at the AdCoD dinner, one of our neighboring cities mentioned that they are no longer doing chip sealing due to numerous complaints about that method. Have we looked at any alternative methods, and is that something that we're interested in going to as well?
So I'm not sure which community that was, but I have an idea. I experienced this issue in another community. I've not talked to David about that in any great detail, but I would say that chip seal, in my experience, is really good for highly-traveled roadways, arterials, and collectors and so forth. And you can sometimes get by with a slurry seal, which is, I'd say it goes down like peanut butter, as opposed to more rock in it. And those are more suitable sometimes for residential streets. So in this case, I'm not sure which treatment we're using on 99th, because it's a full reconstruction, so probably neither one. But absolutely, we can look at that, and there's going to be Geotech recommendations, and clearly, cost is a factor as well, and how long it wears.
Right. And I'm not recommending that we do, just curious if we've looked at that, and if there's been any input from our residents on. I mean, I know most of us don't like it, because it is kind of messy, but I think that it gives a better, longer-lasting treatment for what we're trying to accomplish, because it gives our roadways a longer life. So I'm just curious, isn't that I just throw it out there?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have a question for Kent. And I'll bring this up again, Kent, and I brought this up with David, is that over in my neighborhood, there's a street Pinion Drive. And I drive it, and I drive it during bad weather, and I drive it during good weather. And I compare it to pictures that you all have during your, that are from the vehicle that you drive over, and that's how you grade it. And I still struggle with the grading system, and I know that you guys tried to take the human eye out of it with that system. But using that example that's right down the street from me, and listening to my neighbors and seeing it firsthand, I still struggle. And so can you maybe go into that a little bit, and can you tell me, are you guys looking at that system to make sure that you're getting the most accurate grading information?
Yeah, this was the first year, thank you, Mayor and council. This was the first year, obviously, we've used that new technology. So we're looking at all that data, and, you know, the way the streets are selected is, you know, we try to go from worst to first and select those. And, you know, there's many, many streets within our city that can qualify for that. So what we do when we select these streets is we kind of, you know, we try to equally divide it up between the wards, and based on treatments and what we can afford. So again, we've looked at Pinion, and I think that's a candidate on the list for next year. We are limited, you know, with the amount of funding that we do have, you know, because some of the streets do consider, or take a full reconstruction, or the chip seal, or the slurry. So we're trying to use all those different techniques to stretch our money the furthest we can get. So I think there's been some discussion, and with some additional carryover, we can do additional projects next year.
It just, I struggle with seeing the accuracy in that when I see, you know, and I drive the streets, and I see where the grades are, and then I go compare it to that grade. And, you know, with my eye, and I'm not a construction worker, but just being a resident, the grades don't match up. And so I'd be curious to hear about how the analysis that you guys are going to have with this new system they are using, because based off Pinion, I'm having a little trouble, so.
Right. And what we hope to do is, again, when the PCI is up, do again, to do this same type of treatment again, you know, a technique is the LiDAR treatment, and then begin to build that database and be able to compare and look back and see what the streets are. Are they, you know, three years apart? Are they varying, you know, to the same degree and degrading at the same rate? So right now, we don't really have that database yet, because it's always been visual and done by, you know, some engineers and some operations. So we're trying to build a better, better system for our city, and, you know, we hope to do that with our next PCI survey and begin to build that database. But, you know, right now, it's kind of, we're taking the database that we have, and we're doing visual inspections to try to pick out those streets.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor? Oh, sorry.
So how long is it going to take for all of these to be done, and are we going to be notifying all the residents? What's the process for that? I think that we normally do, but I just want to make sure that we get that information out there for them.
As of right now, we haven't negotiated anything with the contractor, so we don't know schedule at this time. So once approved, then we'll be able to have a pre-con meeting with the contractor and find out what the table and schedule is for these projects.
Jim? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you?
I guess I'm a little confused. If we're being asked to authorize an agreement, and we don't have any, any concept of how long it's going to take, I mean, I think I missed something in that. I mean, you said that we don't have an agreement with them yet, or?
I'm sorry, I missed. We haven't had a pre-con meeting with them to determine what their schedule would be, because we don't negotiate with them until the contract is approved.
Okay. All right, Jim?
I want to make sure councilmember Sensiger's question was answered. I think what Kent was saying is we're, we'll negotiate the schedule, but it's not going to affect the price. And it sounded like you want to make sure we're reaching out to those residents and providing them some kind of notice, correct?
Well, we have a contractor agreement in our packet, so I'm just trying to figure out how long it's going to take. It looks like maybe 60 days?
60 days is the contract time, but, and so we'll have to find out what their schedule is with their other contracts that they have, when they'll be able to come to our city to do these. But they won't, we won't have them, like, start and then stop and then come back. You know, it's, once they're, once we give them the notice to proceed, then in fact, they do have the 60 days to complete that.
Okay.
I just can't tell you now if that's June, July, August, September, October. But when we do, as normal, we'll send out notifications and everything. Especially for 99th Street, we'll be able to do that, do that as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That clarified it. That's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
So the other thing I want to mention, not to steal the thunder for next week, is we're going to talk about capital project financing. But there, I think a couple of questions came up tonight. You're going to be looking at a resolution later that talks about the concrete and trail replacement program. We have two different funding sources that we use for that. But we only put about $50,000 of, shall I say, non-CDBG money into concrete replacement. And then the other thing that we're looking at, we had some good internal conversations within the last week about what is it going to take in terms of an annual dollar amount to have a real robust residential street program. And so right now, it's $450,000. We think it needs to be more than that, and so we'll be having that discussion with you next week, so we can prioritize both of those things in the context of the 2018 budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 52 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 53.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glenn and Colorado Barricade Company for the North Glenn High School STEM and Holstrom School Zone Improvements Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, this is a resolution for a contract for the school zone improvements project. Again, we've been trying to take this approach of doing an assessment one year and doing some implementation the following year. Please to present tonight, we have three big projects. Two basic school sites, though, that we're looking at, North Glenn High School improvements with the school zone along Huron Street, as well as some no parking signage, which is really reestablishing the existing restricted parking signage in the area. And then the STEM Holstrom improvements, which again is going to be very coincidental with the school districts project over there. And so we did an IFB, Colorado Barricade, again, as the clerk mentioned, it was the lowest bidder. And so we have a resolution here that we're recommending approval for a contract with Colorado Barricade for $83,015 with a 10% contingency. And that'll leave us $108,000 in the school zone assessment balance. So we're not even spending half of the balance on that project, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure who, Kent. When you were looking at this, and I remember we spoke about it during the assessment period, on Melody Drive, is that a school zone back there?
That is not.
And was there any discussion of making that a school zone to try to slow some of that traffic down, being that that's one of the areas in the city that we do get a lot of feedback from?
We looked at it in accordance with the MUTCD, and where a school zone is placed with that, so we would be, if it wasn't in accordance with the Manual of Uniform Traffic and Design standards for school zones.
Really, even with its proximity to North Glenn High School right there?
That's correct.
And to make a school zone, do you have to fall within that guidelines, or is that the city's prerogative?
I would have to investigate that. And, you know, typically, what we do is we follow those guidelines in the MUTCD for school zones.
Look, I think I can probably take that one and say that my recommendation is certainly that the city follow those guidelines, because if you follow those standards, if you are sued, you have typically what's called a complete defense against liability. If you don't, then you create risk to the city, because you're not following the engineering standards.
So, and I respect the engineering standards, but to me, they don't make sense with the proximity to the school right there, and with the traveling that goes on, and with the complaints of speeding that we are getting on that road. And so that's something I would like to look at, and I'm not sure if, it's something that needs to be addressed, and I was hoping to see it addressed here, but it wasn't. And so, yeah, I'd like to see what that might look like, and I don't know if there's, how engineers can do it, or if there's ways to expand the zone or something, but I think it's something I would like to see.
And I guess in a very general sense, there may be other ways to address traffic impacts. School zones is one way, but there are other methods. And I think the idea is that the MUTCD doesn't, doesn't, the standards don't allow for a school zone. That doesn't mean there aren't other methods that might be consistent with MUTCD that you could use for traffic calming or slowing down speeds.
Okay. Okay, so we can investigate different alternatives.
Certainly do that, yes. Happy to do that.
All right. Anyone else?
I'm just curious, do we know why, because I noticed it on the previous one as well, that you probably, you may not have an answer for me at all, and it's not a criticism or anything like that, just the wide variety in bid amounts in all of these packages. I mean, this one in particular is $33,000 difference between the high and low bid, and I'm just curious if we know what's going on, why they're not very similar seeming?
It could just be the contractor's workload. You know, if they have a significant amount of work, they may just want to bid higher, and, you know, they don't really need that project. So in a project like this, with these three different areas, I think 33 is a pretty, I mean, again, it sounds like a lot, but, you know, we've received bids before that are hundreds of thousands of dollars apart, and that's, you know, that means that you're not writing the specifications or providing the, you know, information that is necessary to do that. So, you know, but there could be other circumstances as well.
Okay. I was just curious, because I just noticed that it seems like a huge, and, you know, I want to make sure we're good with our money, but I also want to make sure we're getting good quality folks and doing the work as well. So I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All right. Please open the vote. Thank you.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 53 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 54.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glenn and Perfect Patch Asphalt Company for the 2017 residential sidewalk and trail replacement program.
Move to approve.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, this is the concrete program and greenway trail replacement resolution. We did our bids on March 7, and the low bidder was Perfect Patch Asphalt. They had a bid amount of $108,000, and that was negotiated down with a reduction in scope to just under $95,000. And again, $50,000 will be coming from the capital projects fund, $48,000 of the work is that fund, so we have approximately $2,000 in contingency there. And then $50,000 from Conservation Trust Fund, which again, is lottery proceeds. And that project work was about 46 and a half, so we have about $3,500 there. And so we recommend approval of the contract for a total amount of $94,826.50 to Perfect Patch Asphalt, with contingency then up to a full $100,000.
All right. Questions, comments?
I'm going to start on this end first. Okay. Questions or comments? All right. So now, Kim?
So you said that the scope of work was reduced. What was removed to get this down under budget? And I don't, my concern is that we're removing items that we really need to have done, and there's such a tiny contingency that maybe we can look for some funds to get into this, so that we can get everything that we needed completed, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand your question. Kent would probably have those, hopefully have those details, but...
I'm not sure what we, exactly, we took out. Typically, we just, we just take out different areas and try to balance it between the wards again to get it down. This concrete program and trail program, you know, this is unlike the CDBG, where we can just pick and select. I would have to go back and find out those specific areas that we cut out, and I apologize for...
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if council can get that information.
We can get back to you with that, for sure.
That'd be great. Thank you. Kyle?
Two things, Mayor, if I may. Can you tell me in regards to the residential sidewalk curb and gutter, is that a full replacement, or, and I'm looking at one of the, one of the sites here, and I've gotten word from one of the residents that they were having drainage issues and some pooling of water. And so when you're fixing the sidewalks and the gutters, and it's on here, which I'm happy to see, does, do you guys look at the drainage and the pooling, and is that fixed along with this?
We do. We do our best to try to mitigate those areas and improve the drainage. Sometimes we are restricted by the slope of the road, and, you know, so that's why we kind of cut out in some of those areas, do a one-foot cutback into the asphalt, and then we come back and patch that out. So we do really try to do our very best to get those flows flowing in the proper direction and eliminate the pooling.
Perfect, perfect. And I just also wanted to give you kudos for coming in under budget, and I think it probably would have been easy just to come to council with the $108,000 and call it a day, but I do appreciate you guys doing the work to come in at the budget, so. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CR 54 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 55.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glenn and CGRS Incorporated for the Fox Run PRV replacement project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, this is a resolution to approve a contract for the Fox Run PRV, or Pressure Relief Valve, Pressure Reducing Valve Replacement Project. Last year, we got numerous calls from residents in the Fox Run Pressure Zone that were saying there was low pressure there. And so I actually did some analysis and found that the PRVs were not functioning properly, so this would, to be, to replace those. We did our bid in February, and the lowest responsible bidder was CGRS Inc. with a bid of $72,952. The appropriation in the fund more than covered... The appropriation in the fund more than covers that, and after this contract is hopefully approved, we will still have a balance of close to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in that fund. So, we're recommending approval of the, the contract, again, for seventy-nine thousand, excuse me, seventy-two thousand nine fifty-two, and then a contingency that would bring the total contract to eighty thousand two forty-seven.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR-55 passes unanimously.
Thank you. The last one is CR-56.
A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of North Glenn and Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools for use and access of Wyco Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council. So, you heard a little bit about this during public invite to be heard. This is a proposal for a IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement between Adams Twelve Five-Star School District and the City of North Glenn for both temporary and permanent use of a portion of the city property at Wyco Park adjacent to the STEM Lab School. Amanda Peterson can kind of walk through the, the specifics of the agreement if you have questions. We've got representatives from the, the school district here tonight as well. But, long story short, the school district needed some space for the temporary construction, and so this facilitates the improvements to the school while still allowing the school to be operational. And then, at the end, the city and the community get some improved facilities for the neighborhood. And the great part about this is the school district is paying for this as part of their construction project as well. So, we think it's a great partnership, and we recommend approval of the, the IGA.
Thank you. Discussion, comments? Yes. Amanda, you want to come up? There's a question for you then. Joe?
The path is, is going to remain open, correct?
The path, there will be a-
That goes right through the middle.
There will be an east-west section of the path that will be closed temporarily during construction. They will relocate that path to the, I'm going to get my directions confused now, to the opposite side of the tennis court.
But, when the, when the playground opens, I understand during construction it needs to be closed, but when it opens, the path will be accessible.
When it opens, the path will be relocated.
Relocated?
Because there will be a playground over the top of the current trail section.
And what's the temporary parking?
So, the temporary parking is construction parking for the staff who are-
Construction workers?
Yes.
Okay. So, during construction, they're going to relocate the path?
Correct.
It's important to me. I walk my dogs here every night.
So, there will be a time, there will be a time-
So, I want to make sure that I don't have to walk all the way up the street.
There will be a time where you will not be able to cross that east-west path.
What path?
There will be a time you will not be able to cross east-west on that north end of the park.
So, instead of walking my 1.3 miles, it's going to increase?
A little further. I have to go all the way to the sidewalk.
Unbelievable.
It's the heel program.
We haven't, we haven't denied anybody cutting across the turf area, so that's an option as well.
Well, I know they're late enough to where they wouldn't even know that I screwed around with their equipment. We're good.
All right. Is there anyone else?
Can I pay Amanda so that you add the extra length to walk? We're trying to stretch you out a little bit.
All right, Carol.
Maybe a year.
I think it's a great IGA for the STEM School and for the city. My only concern is, I'm very disappointed that the hockey rink wouldn't be, being brought back up to being hockey rink instead of basketball courts. There's basketball courts already on Holstrom's, in Holstrom's area, and I think when the hockey rink was in good condition, it was used a lot, and just, that's the hockey fan in me saying, I think it's disappointing that they're just getting rid of that, but I would like to have seen that upgraded and stay, stay there.
I will say, we had, we took the boards out three years ago now. I have received zero feedback from anyone stating disappointment, from the community stating disappointment.
Really?
We saw really minimal use of that space, and although it was a unique space for us, we just weren't seeing that kind of use on that space.
Okay. I can appreciate that.
And so by being able to provide the basketball court and other hard surface sport court area, the students at STEM Lab will be able to use that during the day where they don't have access to the, to the park at Holstrom.
Right. It's just a different type of sport to attract people to, so it would have been nice to see it, but that's okay, I understand. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Amanda.
All right. Thank you. I do want, if I may clarify, just because the students alluded to a temporary playground.
Yes.
The IGA allows them temporary use of the park and the tennis courts, but it doesn't add any temporary play equipment, so there will be a time when they won't have play equipment, and that's not being installed as part of the agreement. The permanent equipment will be.
That's confusing.
So, is the, so is the equipment belong to the city, or does it belong to the school?
It'll belong to the school.
Okay. And they are, from what I understood, they were going to take it out and, and store it for a while, right?
And then they're going to reinstall it permanently.
Right. So, I mean, they're not losing it, and-
No. The students just indicated to you in their letters that they were provide, that they were asking for a temporary playground.
Right.
We're not able to provide them with a temporary playground, but we are able to provide them with a temporary play space, which is going to be the grassy area of the tennis courts.
Yeah, right. Okay. Yeah. So, they want to run around with these?
Correct.
How long are they going to be without a playground for?
Two years.
I, I believe it's the full two years.
One year?
Teresa and Mo are here, and they can respond to that.
Okay, so.
Should the playgrounds, or the new playgrounds-
Come on up.
Sorry. I'm going to help the assistant director of facilities with the district. Thank you guys for having us, and we appreciate this opportunity. The new playground, we're anticipating it to open up fall of 2018, so we'll start the construction now June of '17, and then in '18, we should have the new play space available for the students.
Ah, okay. Okay. That's better than two years, for sure.
And they'll have a play area to burn off this energy that we were hearing about tonight.
So, the, the temporary space will become the permanent playground. Right now, we're just working on a temporary agreement, and then we'll finalize everything and have permanent play space for the students. But it will be within the same play area, and we were just talking, the size is comparable to the existing playground, it's just a little different shape.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
I'm sorry, Debbie.
What's the artwork that we have over there?
Artwork?
Is the statue still going to be okay, or is it going to be moved?
Amanda, can you come back, please? I'm sorry.
The bench?
Yeah, the bench. Artwork?
The bench.
It's artwork. It's a bench.
The existing sculpture, I believe, imagine that is placed at Wyco Park. It will not be impacted by the construction. We specifically made sure that was outside of the construction area. And we did have a request from one of the teachers at STEM Lab if we, the foundation would potentially consider placing an additional future piece out there, so that has been passed along to the appropriate staff.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor. All right. No, that's okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR-56 passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, discussion items, Jim.
I must save my neck from craning for my slides, and it'll be over my shoulder otherwise, so I've already messed it up.
Bob's coming to your rest.
Bob's coming to save you.
You did a dry run at 10:00 AM, but not in this room, so. Well, well, thank you again, Jim Hayes, City Manager. I'm standing here tonight because I wanted to give a public update to all of you, as well as the members of the public, on the work plan that we've all been working on for the last several months. If you recall, we had some discussion in February, right before your retreat, and that was really more annual data that we were providing. This is really the first quarter that we have a 2017 work plan update. So, I will point out that this is through March 31st, so you probably saw in your packet some of the dates have already passed, if you will. So, I do have some updates on some of those things I can provide verbally tonight. Again, it's really intended to track major projects, operational initiatives, and operations data, really to provide information to, to the public. And each one of the projects is aligned with the city council goal and the budgeted resources that we have. The data that we're collecting, I'm going to share some of it tonight, but some of it is annual data, so by the end of the year, we'll be able to track and compare to what we did in 2016, and so hopefully next February, we at least have two years of trends we can start talking about, again, in anticipation of your next retreat. So, I'm going to run through these relatively quickly because you're all very familiar with a lot of these projects. But again, for the benefit of the public, the, the first goal talks about upgraded city infrastructure and facilities, and we have several projects on there, of course, the big one being the Justice Center. The design and construction GMP has been completed. We've actually started now some O&amp;M, or Operations and Maintenance Budget Planning, because with a brand-new forty-five thousand square foot building, we've got to heat and cool and staff that building. Obviously, we're moving some people over there, but we're starting to look at those things for the 2018 budget. The bond rating from S&amp;P was double A, double A minus for COPs. I would say that's the, the Colorado clause, if you will, because of Tabor, so the COPs are subject to annual appropriation. And those were closed, again, in Q1, and we did receive since then also two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars from Adams County as a reimbursement for the land we bought to the west, if you're known as the Berry Property. And of course, all of you attended the, the groundbreaking, and we do have a webcam that's up on our website right now, which you can look at still photos or actually live construction. And please stop me during this if you have questions on any of these things. Ralston House, good news, bad news right now. We are undeterred, though. We are moving forward as best we can. Design has been submitted to the Building Division. Again, the Phase Two IGA was executed by all the municipal parties that funded 75% of the construction. And so we went ahead and worked with Ralston House to submit an Energy Impact Grant to the Department of Local Affairs. Unfortunately, last Thursday, we received news that our grant was not approved. We did not receive any funding at all. I actually spoke with the staff of DOLA today, and unfortunately, we're one of the largest cities that made an application, and they had said, you know, if it was just us, it actually might have gone a little further, but with the perception of deep-pocketed Aurora, Thornton, Adams County, they wanted the municipal parties to put more money into the project. That's a bit of a catch-22, because if they had done that, we wouldn't have needed the grant. So, I'm working with Don Mosley now, and he's trying to chase down some other grant funding sources, and then we're going to have to go back to the municipal parties probably and see if we can get more contributions to the project. So, in the meantime, we're doing site prep, we're working on building plans, we're just going to continue working on building the capital stack and getting the thing moving forward.
Jim, what is the deficit now, then, between what we expect, I mean, what's the need?
Three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Yes. Civic Campus. Again, you, you approved the final plan on April 10th, so again, in the, into the second quarter. We started some weekly project meetings, multi-departmental project meetings. I think you'll see the first fruits of our labor next week when we talk about capital project financing. We really took that implementation plan in trying to identify how we can actually implement and pay for Phase One, given all the other demands we have for providing services as well as capital projects in the community. So, we're going to be coming back with, with that next week. We have issued an RFP for the Recreation Center Complex Public Engagement, but we will not be signing off on that contract, of course, until you see it, but also until we have that discussion next week. So, we still have time to, to pull the plug on that if, if we need to. Just a, a couple of data points here. As you can see there, some of this data is seasonal, so Q1, we didn't turn on the irrigation system, so thankfully, we had no breaks or repairs needed. But I show this because, you know, this is the type of thing we'll be reporting throughout the year. We did have a lot of time spent on playground repairs and vandalism, but on the proactive side of things, we've done all, all of our playground inspections on time. We've far exceeded our goal on street sweeping for the year. We're halfway to doing some of the other things with our sewers and water system. Again, seasonal, hopefully this is zero miles in Q2 and Q3, unless we're shoveling hail possibly, but we had well over four thousand lane miles plowed in Q1 with the, the spring storms that we had. And again, trash and recycling information. We did have some fleet readiness issues, which you are aware of, because we just purchased new trash trucks, so that, we're hopefully remedying that situation and hit our goal close to that 95% number. Goal two, all of this is under this heading of fiscally responsible government, right? But, but there's some things that we tied specifically to the, to the project. The records management system, the Tri-Tech Computer Aided Dispatch has been completed, and a lot of the tables will be implemented in Quarter Three, so we're well on track with the Police Department RMS. The policy and procedure manual is about one-third of the way through in terms of its update, and that is also including monthly meetings with command staff to, to get that project done this year. Another one you may have heard of, of course, we talked about the Recreation Center software, the point-of-sale system, pavilion rentals, membership passes, those were all implemented in Q1. Happy to report the last module of online registration and ticketing was implemented in April, so we are, are fully implemented with that project. Still a lot of training to do and a lot of learning to do, but, but that project is moving forward. Under this category too, we have government policy, specifically water in this case. As you know, we had an executive session with you to talk about water rights and, and some purchases that we may be making. We also had Stan Tech come in and go over the water rate study with all of you, and reviewed the draft findings with the Finance Committee. At that point, the direction was to include this as part of the 2018 budget analysis, so we'll be coming back again through that process to talk about the implementation, hopefully in 2018. Capital project financing, I, I foreshadowed this a little bit. We do have a date now, May 15th, we'll be back here, so next week. And we are continuing to coordinate with Stiefel before and after the Justice Center COP issuance, because they have a very good handle on all of our finances, what our ratings are and everything, and so they're really to get up to speed quickly on the capital stack that we're going to need for the, the Recreation Center and the Civic Campus. Some, some quick stats, I would just say, I'm not going to read all these, but I would say we're on track for our annual goals in most of these categories. Again, we should be about a fourth of the way to that goal, and so we're well on our way there. Drop-in visits, we hope would pick up, but again, field rentals and park pavilions, a lot of those things, again, are seasonal, and we'll have increases in those categories. Theater, seventy booking days in Q1. It's, you know, almost, you know, three-fourths of the days essentially were, or more were booked in Q1. A lot of visits as well, so well on track with, with that. I tried to mix up with a couple of tables in here, I don't know if this one's as effective, we can look at other ways of doing it, but the goal on our website analytics and, and email is, and again, this is the IT side of things, so make sure we've got about a 10% or, excuse me, 2% increase annually, so we've got some goals listed there. Again, we've got four-hundred-and-seventy thousand spam messages that have been blocked that none of us have ever even seen, so thank goodness we do that, or we'd all be, have even more email to respond to. Personnel, two-and-a-half percent turnover, so again, we like to keep that under 10% for the year. And I want to point this one out, the trend on workers' comp claims is below last year. We've had seven in the first quarter. This organization does a great job of, of priding itself on safety. We want people to go home safe at night, but also, this does a really good job of helping our insurance, which is a rolling three-year calendar through SIRS, or, excuse me, through Pinnacle. So, this is very helpful, this kind of data. All right, moving rapidly forward, Goal Three, strong competitive businesses. You heard Debbie's update tonight. We are continuing to provide assistance to the seller of the marketplace, which is LNR, and their brokers. We met with several different buyers before the April auction, so it actually took quite a bit of staff time without knowing who was going to be the winner, if you will, when all shook out. Also during that process, we executed an agreement through Neuro for Park Hill LLC, Bill Park Hill. And he's been very helpful in us coming up with some analysis and, dare I say, a white paper that would really start to outline the types of things that we may be able to offer, whether they be intangible things like the EPA grant or even more tangible things like the utility study that you may have seen a couple of weeks ago. So we're not offering anything formal at this point, really just more of a menu of things that we are going to be negotiating with the new buyer. The auction did close in April, and I heard from Debbie today that the new buyer is very close to finalizing their agreement. So hopefully, we'll be able to announce something soon and continue working with them. Here on Center, I won't belabor that, so we did talk about that a bit tonight. So again, we're hoping to announce those end retailers very soon. The Garland pad site, we are working with a potential developer to purchase the pad site out there and develop an end user. It'd be a restaurant-type retailer on that property. And then also the Belco property, the developers actually closed on that property, and they're finalizing a lease with a national coffee retailer. Again, we'll name the name as soon as we're able to. Debbie mentioned the Courts project on the 112th property behind Malle Center. Again, a purchase-and-sale agreement was executed, and so they're in their due diligence, hopefully closing in Q3. Wells Fargo property. For those of you that may not recall, there's a new owner that's investing in that property of $4 million. Mira gave a $450,000 grant for that project. They have nine new tenants already since they acquired this in late 2016. And they're going to be working on landscaping and exterior improvements when the weather gets nice, and then the interior construction should be done later this year. And again, Debbie had mentioned the EPA grants. ED marketing. They've implemented Tagline, Discover North Glen. So you may have seen the pop-up marketing tool that we've got sitting in the City Manager's area. We used that at the Metro North Chamber Business Expo on April 13th, again, as part of our booth. We also had ED staff participate in the selection for the web developer because they're going to be providing a lot of content for their portion of the ED website.
Where are we with that, Jim?
The contract was just approved a couple of weeks ago. So we're in implementation mode, if you will, content development and...
How far out?
Six months? Fall, I think is...
That looks like a confident answer.
I'm just off the top of my head, yes. Six months.
Thanks, Jim.
It's recorded, Jim.
Yeah, but it was turned away from the camera.
I know.
All right. Economic development, again, we got some reactive data. Again, Debbie had a lot of data in her report, but 23 business prospects already in the first quarter. So there's a lot of activity going on and a lot of new businesses that are trying to get open. Over 50,000 square feet of space was absorbed in the first quarter. And some quick building permit information, this is a little slanted, if you will, because some of this is the Justice Center. But the thing I want to point out on here is 13 applications. Those are current active cases at the end of the quarter. So we had about four that got through the pipeline in the last 90 days. So we've got 13 or so that are still in process. So that will, again, lead to other development, hopefully, down the road in more building permits. So Goal Four, again, community governance with civic partnerships. Of course, the 2018 budget and work plan, we talked about that pretty extensively at the retreat. We've been working on plans with all of you to reauthorize the four-mill property tax for 2017. Again, it expires at the end of 2019. And then the legislative policy, again, this is a real important thing to mention here is House Bill 171203 was signed by the governor on May 4th. So kudos to the Legislative Committee and all of their efforts for the last several months. We also monitored several other bills and took positions on them. And again, the committee did a great job of getting us moving forward there. Sponsorship and outside agency funding policy, again, that was adopted in January. The committee did have a meeting during the first quarter. The Fastrex IGA, again, got thrown for a bit of a loop last week. No effect on the IGA itself, but the construction project is held up. And so I'll be mentioning some of that later during my reports, too, to figure out how we can engage with their elected officials. Sign code, again, you saw the sign code tonight specifically, approved on first reading. Hopefully, that'll be adopted here then in the second quarter and we can get that implemented. Nuisance regulations, those will be coming back for a study session next week. And again, we'll schedule those for adoption very soon, they're active. Telephone Town Hall, here's a new piece of information. We've targeted August 3rd for that event. Again, the consulting firm gave us a few dates, but we know with CML and other conferences and things that are going on, we want to get it done this summer. That's the date we selected is August 3rd. We could have more discussion with you about the content for that, but we thought the Rec Center Civic Campus would be ideal. The four-mill discussion, if you wanted to have that before, again, it gets put on the ballot. We could talk about other CIP projects. We could talk about water rates. There's a variety of things. So we'll be bringing some information back to you about the content in the next couple of months. And just some analytics, again, this is data at the end of Q1. So you can see we've got increases in Twitter, Facebook, and we had almost 80,000 visits to the website in the first quarter. And earned media, which is different than I would say reactive media, these are things where we were actively trying to place a story or get the word out about something. We had 27 of those in the first quarter, and our annual goal is basically one a week. So we're well ahead of schedule there. We had a lot to talk about the first 90 days, too. Clean and Beautiful City, community vitalization was the program area. Again, the 112th Avenue Stamp Master Plan was approved by City Council in March. The zoning code rewrite, we'll be back next week again to talk about the schedule, and we're already well underway with the consultant on restarting that project and getting that thing moving forward again. Here on Streets, again, we've had a good discussion, walking tour on March 10th, which Council Member Sensenir and Escabel attended as well, multiple staff. We did a report that was completed and presented to you. One of the things that you may have seen in the reappropriation tonight, supplemental appropriation, was $125,000 in the budget for that. We had initially talked about $50,000, but after our discussion, we realized that wasn't going to get us very far. And so we put $125,000 in the budget for that project for implementation this year. City Hall Space Assessment. We've talked about this room specifically with sound, as well as what are we going to do when the Police Department moves out next year. So I've been working with Bob Laird, and he's got some really good information about sound that we'll be bringing back shortly. I'm targeting early June for that discussion. Also working with David Willett to try to identify what is the short-term, long-term use of the first floor of this building. I think we're going to learn a lot from you next week when we talk about the Civic Campus and how long this building may be here. And so that will probably determine our level of investment in the building. And we probably want to start with this room, I'm assuming. Enhanced Community Image, again, these two things are related to marketing and communications. So I attended a multi-department meeting of communicators. They meet frequently, largely talking about their marketing efforts, plan for the connections and getting information out. But each one of those departments is doing a lot of different things, but the common theme that we identified is we need to do a good job of collecting the data and how effective our marketing is. What is that return on that investment? Because some things are probably more effective than others, but in some cases, we're not really sure. So I think maybe we're going to pull some things together then as part of this effort, which is really the performance monitoring piece of it, is to figure out what are we doing and how effective is it. Branding and logo is implemented or implementing right now. Again, it's a multi-year effort. I was pleased to see the new City Hall sign when I walked in this morning. We've got vehicles that are getting adorned with the logo, letterhead, et cetera. Again, ongoing, and we are tracking every single expenditure that is directly related to the logo and branding to make sure that we are tracking all of that and really determining how much this is going to cost us over time. Enhancing Community Image, I talked about the web redesign. Again, that contract was approved April 24th. Channel Eight improvements, part of the Comcast agreement that was approved will also provide funding for new equipment. So there's an RFP that is being drafted. It should be going out this quarter, and then hopefully, we can get the new equipment by Q3.
Does that RFP include new microphones?
It does not. Not, no, it does not.
Can I ask why?
We haven't finished it yet. We wanted to have the discussion with all of you about the information that we put together from a couple of sound engineers and consultants before we issued the RFP.
So they potentially will be in the RFP, the microphones are...
If it's related to the broadcasting of these meetings, then yes. So yes, we may be able to include them.
Well, it's related to me because when I listen back in, I can't hear all that well. So I thought we had a pretty lengthy discussion about microphones as well.
Will we send them back to give us more information?
Right.
Kyle, part of it is, and Jim is so much more politically correct than I am, but it's because council members turn the microphones away from themselves or sit back like this. I'm one of those. We don't use our microphones properly is part of the problem.
I appreciate that. However, the sound engineers that we had in this room said this room has really bad aesthetics as well. So it's not, it's not just that, for sure.
That's why I say it's part of it.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see where we are on that because I know that for our residents, and I've experienced it trying to listen in on the meetings, if that's, you know, even where I'm at right now, I'm not quite sure how well that's picking it up, to be honest with you. And so, and I know that we had, like I said, we had a lengthy conversation about that. So, yeah.
I frankly don't recall if we can use that funding or not, but if you can build the bridge with the Channel Eight and the broadcasting and the meetings, it's absolutely appropriate to use it for hardware. So I'm pretty confident we can do that, but I just want to verify. Thank you. Again, Clean and Beautiful City Neighborhood Services. You can see we've got, I left 2015 and 2016 up there just so you could see some of the data that Tom and Brooke had presented to you previously. The thing I want to point out here is the number of violations is pretty similar, but the number of cases is on track to be a lot higher, or a little bit higher than it was in 2017. And so I think that demonstrates some activity that's going on with our code enforcement Neighborhood Services folks. Healthy Eating, Active Living. Again, we have a variety of things coming up. Bike rodeo is going to be related to the Kids Fishing Derby, as well as the Bike Ped Mobility Plan. We're going to be complete planning for that event on June 3rd. Unfortunately, we did not receive the ULI grant to fund the project for Parks and Trails Wayfinding, but we'll at least be identifying those elements as part of the Bike Ped Master Plan, Connect North Glen, as it's being branded. And then we can identify funding for those things. Snowstormers Business Challenge, we had 16 homes adopted by three local businesses, and we'll be recognizing those people at the ED Breakfast in October. Several community classes are being held in May. And the most important thing, we achieved the elite status from Livwell, Colorado. Again, one of six communities in the state that has achieved that. So that's a big accomplishment for the people working on HEAL. So wrapping up, livable neighborhoods and homes, goal number six. Again, the Connect North Glen project that was awarded, we had the great discussion last week in this room. Took me back to those planning days. It was almost like a little charrette where we got a lot of things out on the table. Very helpful. There's a public meeting on Wednesday, and I think there's the bike audit Tuesday and then the walking audit right before that meeting on Wednesday. And again, doing a lot of outreach at summer events this year. And then HEAL Sustainability Program, this would not only be for internal, but possibly the city itself. And so we're looking at a scope of work and how that might be put together. That was, again, part of the work plan for this year. The Parks and Rec Master Plan, again, this was an internal effort. It was not funded specifically for a consultant to do the work in 2017. So Amanda and her team are working on a current review of the plan and looking at some benchmark data through the National Association to make sure that how we're maintaining and operating our parks is consistent with those standards. And then Public Safety, got a lot of calls for service. I put the 2016 numbers there at the end so you can see why our Police Department is so busy right now. 33,000 calls for service, close to 7,000 incident reports. Again, we're tracking pretty similar to last year. I am happy to see that the municipal traffic citations are up a little bit, and they were trying some new things in the early parts of this year that we're adjusting, working with the Chief and Commander Lopez. So hopefully, we can continue to focus on that because I know that's important to the community, and you get a lot of calls on those types of things. So hopefully, that was helpful for you and for the public. Our next update will be at the end of Q2, which is August 14th. So I'm hoping any other questions may have.
Questions?
None. Very good, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Communications, and I'll start with Kim this time.
Oh, wow, I have a bunch.
Okay, go.
So I mentioned it earlier that I attended the Adams County Council of Governments ad hoc dinner, quarterly dinner last week, and our own Dr. Coram was there to talk about some pretty neat youth ideas and some of our programs. So he gave a presentation about the Youth Diversion Program, the link, and a proposal for county-wide preschool. So it was a nice dinner, smoking day, barbecue and brew down in Denver. It was really good. The dessert was enormous. It took me three days to eat it. So great event. I mean, it was really, it was a nice event. Seems like the attendance is dropping more and more at those events, but it was still nice to get out and visit with folks. So I had that. And then a question for Jim. So the 104th Grant Intersection Improvements, we said what we wanted to move forward with on April 17th. How long will it be before those are actually implemented? Do you have a guesstimate on how long that's going to take?
I don't at this point. I will tell you that the internal discussions we've had is that unfortunately, we don't think we can do that with our in-house staff, given the complexity of the turning movements and the maintenance of traffic that would be required at that intersection. During that discussion, as part of the Connect North Glen, I was reminded we have about $15,000 in that budget for a bike pilot project. And so what we decided to do was, they're both striping-related, so we were going to combine those into one bid package and get that sent out for a contractor to do that work.
Can you give us more information about this bike striping thing? That can be in a follow-up email or something to it.
Yeah, in fact, we probably are going to want to have more discussion about that when we come back to talk about Connect North Glen before we were even considering implementing anything like that. And it would be around schools as well. We're targeting Grant Street itself because of the safety concerns near Stukey there. But we've got to get some more details before we're ready to come back and present that to you.
Okay, so in other words, 104th and Grant striping that we request isn't happening several months down the road, is what I'm hearing?
That's accurate, yes.
Personally, I think that would have been good information to note the study session because I, for me, I was thinking, hey, this is going to be great. We're going to have this done here pretty soon, the next couple of weeks, maybe month. And so just... And then just one personal note, my nephew Shane is graduating from North Glen High School on Monday, so congratulations, Shaner. Be happy to see you there doing your graduation. And then I just wanted to publicly thank our representatives and our senators. So it was Representative Lebsok, Senator Martinez-Huminic, and Senator Crowder for sponsoring our bill, HB 1203, that is a local government special sales talks on retail marijuana that the governor signed on the 4th of May. And I just wanted to say thank you publicly to them. I've also tweeted thank yous to them, but their leadership really helped get that through as well as testifying by Kyle. And just, we did a lot of work on that as Legislative Committee. We were really down there, and Jeff, and Cory, and Jim, we all worked together very well to get this passed, and it's a great thing for our residents and for our businesses. You know, and it's good policy. And then my final thing, and I'll get up on a soapbox for a few moments on this one. On one of the Facebook groups that several of us are members of, you know, I know we're all pretty active and trying to keep abreast of what's going on in our community, there was a post today that I took great exception to and found it very offensive. They commented that it takes at least three times for an issue... They commented that it takes at least three times for an issue to be brought up to this council before we're willing to react on it, and it was about safety issues and speeding. And I just want to tell our public, and I responded, maybe I shouldn't have, but it really, really offended me to have someone say this about our council. And for our public, safety is one of our number-one concerns. We do a lot of work around safety, and looking at school zones, looking at speeders, we implemented a traffic calming policy, and, you know, we take safety very serious in this community, and for people to bash us and say that we don't pay attention to that is just highly offensive to me. So I just wanted to put it on the record that that torqued me today. Thank you.
Okay, Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to second Kim on the legislative committee. We, I feel like we really did a great job this year, and it finally hit its stride, and give kudos to everyone that was involved, because we did accomplish something down there this year that has been years in the making, that we, you know, we've worked on that for a couple of years now, and so seeing that happen was really neat and rewarding. I also want to give a shout-out to the chief and his guys, the ceremony earlier, and the ceremony that's going to happen here in a couple of weeks. I've been before, and it's a great thing, and it's a great way to honor the people that really put their lives on the line to come out and save us in dire needs, and I always use the example that if somebody's breaking into my house and I call 911, that police officer doesn't know me from Joe Schmo, but he comes, and he has a family at home, and he comes and puts his life on the line to make sure that I'm protected, and I think that deserves a lot of thanks and appreciation, so I want to say that real quick. Some other things, obviously food truck carnival's this weekend, and my family is looking forward to going, and Gabby's already talking about the rides. It was a little cold last year, and so she's excited to finally do them this year. I was looking on the calendar, it looks like there's a free landfill day on the 13th, which is kind of neat. And we also have a backyard chicken keeping class on the 16th of May, and so that's pretty exciting. I'm not quite sure, I know we're supposed to be getting an update on how that has gone in the neighborhoods, probably in June, I would imagine, because that would have been a year, I believe, so.
It's next week, actually.
That we're getting the update?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Next Monday.
So I'm excited to hear about that. And then, Mayor, one last thing, and it was kind of brought up a little bit tonight, about RTD in our lay rail system. And it was out in the paper that that's getting delayed, and I want to put it out there that that is, it's completely unacceptable. It's unacceptable on RTD's part, they've had issues at other lines, and now that seems to be boiling over to the line that affects North Glen and Thornton. And I want to put it out there that I don't think that that's right, and I think that our residents and our citizens are paying their taxes for that line, and that they should get what they're paying for. And so I would like to see our city look into, you know, making a statement saying that this isn't acceptable, and that we're not going to go down the path of what we've seen happen on other lines, and that we're, you know, that we want, that we're going to be keeping a close eye on this project to make sure that our residents are getting what they deserve, and what they've paid for. And so if I could just make that request, and see if there's something that we could look into during as a council.
And we are working with the RTD staff. They contacted us last week, you know, and gave us a heads-up before it went public. But I agree with you totally, and we really have to keep their feet to the fire, you know, because they committed something to us, and now, you know, it has stopped. And there was no, there was no reason given to us when the statement came, other than there was scheduling and some other things that were going on, and they were going to get back with us. So I did talk to Larry Hoy extensively last week, and he understands it's not acceptable at all, but...
Well, hopefully, you know, if we can get a message out as a council as a whole, and, you know, I think that that carries a lot of weight, that we're not going to stand idly by and let this, you know, project be delayed, and that we're going to fight tooth and nail to make sure our residents get what they deserve and what they pay for.
I agree with you, Kyle. I'm on board with that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Sure.
Good to know, Mayor.
Anything?
The only thing I have is a question for the council. Commerce City is having their parade again on Memorial Day, and wondering if anyone wanted to be part of the parade. So I needed to know, so we can get that information to the parade committee, so...
Is that for the Elks?
Well, the Elks is offering, you know, to ride on their float again, but then we have another opportunity also, so, but we're trying to figure out how many people want to go for it, so. Is there anyone interested at this point, or can make a commitment? Because we have to get that information to, not to the Elks, but to the committee itself.
I would be on board joining the Elks again, if we were to do it.
Yeah, they are going to do it.
Yeah, the year I went, I thought it was great, and, yeah, they were very welcoming.
Okay, so would be your wife, too, and everybody?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They're my crew.
Your crew, okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think I would do it this year.
Okay, two?
I'm camping.
No? All right, so we've got a few. All right, all right, so it's an all-morning thing on Memorial Day, so, all right. Thank you, that's all I've got. Carol?
Okay, I attended the first meeting of the Webster Lake Promenade Sculpture Committee, where we narrowed down from, I don't even remember how many, design concepts for sculpture on the pads, the four pads out there. We narrowed it down to four design concepts, and tomorrow we will meet again to try and agree on a favorite artist to move forward with for the concepts. And I can just say right now that there were some great ones, there were some great lighted pieces, there were kinetics, large pieces, abstract pieces. So it was very interesting, and it seemed like the committee was all on the same page, because we picked all the same top choices. So that should be interesting. I attended the NSO luncheon last week, was held at the Golden Corral. They had Adams County Treasurer Patsy Melanakis there to discuss the taxes, Adams County property taxes, which was timely, because the next day in the mail, the notice was in everybody's mailboxes, I'm sure, so that was probably good for the seniors to get a, have a sounding board with her. I attended with Amanda and Dana the Adams County Open Space Grants Awards, where we received awards both for the property adjacent to the Justice Center, for design concepts for a park, and for the Kiwanis Splash Pad Project. So that was a good event. I'm sorry, I have all these things written down. The Youth Commission is currently working on, talking about holding open houses for recruitment, since recruitment is one of their main issues with all of them graduating. I know we say that all the time, but, so they're thinking of going to the different schools, the junior highs, and trying to recruit when the new school year begins, so that's in discussion right now. And they also will be joining in on the Paint-a-thon this year, so. They did that last year, I think they've done that the last few years. The NAHF is discussing the Owl Sculpture Placement, which it's interesting that the Waiko people were talking about that, because Michael reiterated that the artists really would like it to be in a place that can be used, and since that is a very interactive sculpture of looking through the eyes, that's a very good suggestion. I can't say for sure that it would be placed there, but I will bring that one up, that's a good suggestion. And then I have to do a personal note for my son Tyler, who is graduating from college on Saturday, from CSU with a degree in physics with a minor in math, and he did it in three years, which is incredible, and also a money saver for mom and dad, but he is really an awesome kid, and I'm very proud of him, so congratulations to Tyler. And I can't wait to go see the award ceremony, so, or the diploma ceremony, sorry.
Can I just say, that makes me feel really old. I feel like I just started, like, college yesterday.
Yeah, I just did it really quickly.
Wow.
Yeah.
Three years, that's amazing.
You feel old, okay.
That is amazing, though, for three years. It is very good.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I have to say this, too. So Tyler also received a full ride scholarship, I can't believe I forgot to say this, a full ride for grad school to Boston College, and on top of the full ride, he got a stipend to work in the lab and do research there, on top of it, so.
Oh, that's really good. That's really good.
I know, I know.
Wow.
Yeah, good news, smart little kid.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I'm done, sorry.
Becky?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Tyler, because I think that's awesome.
That's right.
That is really cool. I don't have a lot, I have the food truck this weekend, and my personal shout-out should be happy anniversary, Mr. Brown. Twenty-nine years, so it's on the record.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now, this Sunday.
He's hiding back here.
I know he is.
Yeah, yeah.
He's just checking to see if I can keep the number of years right, because apparently I blocked a few out. But really, that's all I have.
Great, okay, thank you. Marcy?
I just wanted to thank all of our community partners that came out to the Manufacturers' Roundtable on Friday. It was a great event, and great to just hear some of the opportunities with workforce development, and all those things that our manufacturers can take advantage of. And then I did attend the Sign Code Luncheon, I thought that went really well. And then lastly, I just wanted to say, and many of you may have heard this, but Carrie Glenn was appointed the president of the Anything Library Board, so congratulations to him, that's really cool. He's part of the North Glen STEM and North Glen residents, so congratulations, Carrie.
I just have a couple of things, Mayor.
Okay.
Enjoyed the breakfast this morning, but I didn't, I mean, coffee with the mayor this morning, but I didn't, couldn't buy into the topic too well.
A few of us didn't buy into that too well.
The topic was assisted living, and kind of, oh.
They were afraid to ask questions, so it was kind of like, uh-oh.
I didn't want to ask any questions about that, so. Last Wednesday, I attended the Adams 12 School Board Meeting, and talked to them about Connect North Glen. They had committed two people to walk. The program, I told them that wasn't really enough, that we needed the principals and the parents involved, so they assured me that they would get that information out to the principals and to the parents, because this really is about safety for our kids and our communities, not just walking and biking, it's really more about safety. Last Saturday, I guess it was last Saturday, I can't even remember, I attended the Hispanic Advisory Council for Adams 12 School District, where we awarded 12 scholarships. Also attended the open ribbon cutting for On the Dollar. If you haven't been to On the Dollar, it's a cool little place. Carolyn and I were there, it was, it was different from any other dollar store you've been to, or that I've been to. It was very neat, very well organized, plenty of staff, the owners were awesome, great to have that kind of partnership. Also attended the North Glen STEM program last Wednesday, and I know I say it all the time, but the kids are amazing, kids are amazing. Six hundred freshmen presenting their projects, from robotics to artificial limbs, to, I mean, things I can't even explain, things I've never even heard of. I can't even work my iPhone, and these guys are just amazing. They have mentors from UCD, from Colorado State, that come down and give their time to the students, and all this is happening right here in our backyard, and more importantly, in my ward. I mean, this school has, having worked there 10 years ago or so, this school has made a 360, 360, 720-degree turn. They are just amazing, those kids are amazing, and principal's amazing, the staff they have is amazing, kudos to North Glen High School. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Cory?
Hi. Nothing this evening.
All right, Jim?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to clarify, the Candlelight Vigil event on May 18th, it starts at 7:00 PM, but we were encouraging the public to arrive by 6:30, so that's what was in the connections. So if you see two different times, starts at 7:00, but arrive at 6:30. The other thing I want to follow up on was the RTD discussion. There is an elected officials briefing on May 18th, I think it's at like 7:00, 7:30 in the morning.
7:30, I think.
7:30 at the RTD offices, excuse me, at the project office on 121st over in Park Center. And the other thing I, we've already done, is we have reached out to Larry Hoy, as well as Ashlyn Vaughn, who's the project manager, and they're willing to come to a council meeting in two weeks. And so I really wanted to ask if you want us to do that as a public invite to be heard, where they just come and give you a five-minute briefing, or if you'd like us to schedule it on the agenda as a formal presentation, because they're willing to do either. So I want to get the council feedback on that, and then we'll contact them again tomorrow.
Seems to me like we'd give them more time if it was a formal presentation, and with all the questions, it may happen, I'm thinking that's the way to do it.
So I add as a discussion item?
Right, that's fine.
Okay, great. And then the last thing, on each of your desks there, I provided an annual report for my first year on the job, so it's long, but as you saw from the work plan, we've accomplished a lot as a team this year, and so real proud of the staff we've got, and wanted to report some of that to you in writing as well. Thank you.
Joanna?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next?
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry.
No. Yeah, go ahead.
You know what, I did want to give a shout-out to North Glen resident Jill Parsons, who is a member of the North Glen Corral, she was a former councilperson. She's actually, the North Glen Corral is getting the opportunity, along with the Stukey Singers, the choir from Stukey Elementary, which is pretty awesome, to sing along with face when they play at Red Rocks. So that's a really great opportunity, you know, if you get a chance to go to it. I believe it's in August, I'm sorry, do not know the date off the top of my head, but I did want to give her a shout-out for that, because that's pretty amazing, and they're excited.
For the Corral, right?
Yeah, for the Corral and the Stukey Singers, they both get to go, yeah.
Right, okay, good.
That's awesome.
Mm-hmm, it is, there's more and more for North Glen.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, now, we have invited, public invited to be heard for up to three minutes, I don't see anybody running up here, so we will, I'll move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Section 4.5, Subsections Parent D and Parent E of the City of North Glen Home Rule, Charter for Legal Consultation and Advice and Pending Litigation Related to Section 36. I need a second, please.
Second.
Okay, please open the vote.
I apologize, but the vote is not responding at this moment.
Okay, so can we do a verbal?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in the executive session.